Call tonight's council meeting to order. It is Monday, October 17th, 2022. We'll start with roll call.
Krieger.
Present.
McConnell.
Present.
Fortune.
Here.
Busca.
Yes.
Carmen.
Present.
Next, we'll act on the consent agenda, and that includes, number one, the approval of the agenda; number two, approval of claims; number three, approval of minutes from October 3rd, 2022; number four, approval of minutes from October 12th, 2022, special meeting; number five, approval of street closing permit for portions of Third Avenue West, Second Street West, alley between Third Avenue West and Fourth Avenue West, and North Elm Street for United Methodist Church Swiss Steak Dinner on November 21st, 2022; number six, approval of the designated snowmobile trail in the city limits for December 1st, 2022 through April 1st, 2023; and number seven, approval of owner-occupied housing contractor request for payment number one for $11,782.35 for Arlen Skoda of Skoda Home Improvement.
So moved.
Second.
Jan and Amy, I believe?
Carmen.
Yes.
Busca.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
Next, we have staff reports. We'll start with Public Works.
CIT was here last week to repair the critical items they had found while doing their inspection this summer. And in doing so, they actually encountered a couple more spots that they repaired while they were here. They had gotten worse or whatever. So then I have also started the tree grant application for the upcoming spring planting. This is for boulevard trees at no cost to the property owners. So if you're interested, please contact City Hall, or you can go online and do it. The street guys hauled in sand for this upcoming winter and blended it with a couple loads of salt as well, so they should be good to go for the wintertime. Unfortunately, it's coming. And then all departments are staying busy, doing everything they need to get accomplished and prepared for winter.
Okay, thank you. Next is Police, and I see Dave took off. We'll then...
So I do have a report.
Or do you have a report? Okay.
The charger is down in Waterloo getting equipped for that new equipment in the new car. Officer Blake graduates on the 21st from the academy, and will be back to work on the 25th. And Officer Gatlin is half done with his academy, so he has eight more weeks to go.
All right, next we'll go to Administration reports.
Started handing out the budget reports to the different departments. And the CIP, I think you guys are all working on ranking that, so we'll get that together. Amber Yane started today, and the utility billing clerk. And evaluations have been turned in, so most of those are getting done. We're just doing the final ones now, so.
Okay.
When do you want us to come back with CIP ratings?
As soon as possible.
Is there a deadline?
If we could have it by the end of the week would be great, if that works.
Okay. Committee updates? Anybody had committee meetings yet this month?
Had Theater Commission last Monday, and they were going over budget items, reviewing what was in the CIP, what they'd asked for and everything. The Scene Shop Committee also met, due to the fact that we're eligible for a emergency theater community catalyst building remediation program grant. The state is putting out five $100,000 grants, and we would be eligible for one. We've already started the pre-application process, and this would be similar to what we did with the brewery, where the city acts as the fiscal agent. They'll take and give the money to the city, and then as the bills come in, then the city would pay it. Currently, in the Theater Trust, we're at just over $96,000, and that's not including the $6,000 or $6,700 that was earmarked for the curtains and rigging there. So if we get this grant, along with Alliant, Black Hills, Walmart, and Jason said there's some other ones, we could be well beyond our halfway mark. We do have a pledge for $30,000 already, once we start to get the project going. But with this grant, it gives you one year from the time that you're approved until it's done to do the project. So if we end up doing it and we do get this grant, then that'll be something that we have to look at, because this would go towards the Scene Shop, or the rebuilding of the Scene Shop. But it's a healthy dose in the arm to get $100,000, you know, no strings attached. But Jason thought that it would be a very good possibility that we would get it, so.
Sure.
Good news for once.
Yep. Yep. Any other committee updates?
The Airport Committee met, and basically just went through their budget and their one grant that was turned down and they'll put in for next year for the runway project. So that's probably going to be their last meeting for the year.
Okay.
It wasn't a committee, but I was at the Get Charged Up EV event on Thursday, and I would say Representative Bergen, who was here, was also there. They had really good attendance. This was at Kelmer. A bunch of EV owners brought their cars for ride-and-drives, and we talked about charging infrastructure, funding, how the utilities are working on it. It was actually a good event.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Next, comments from the audience? Anybody has any comments and wants to come forward? Want to come up and state your name and...
Do I need a mic?
I don't know if we'll hear when you tap it, but it should be on or off. Yep.
Can you hear me? Anyway, my name is Angela Breece, and I'm here tonight to urge the council to make some changes to city ordinances that can benefit the whole community. The first change I would like to see made is actually threefold, and that is to enforce the city ordinances that are currently in place, ensure the ordinances are enforced citywide in every neighborhood, and to shorten the amount of time property owners have to deal with infractions on their property. You all know that I've been here before, and I have asked for your help with different properties piled with junk and nuisance vehicles. And I am happy to report that the nuisance vehicles were eventually moved, but there is still a property owner who has junk piled around his house and garage that has a negative effect on the properties that surround it and the neighborhood that it is in. This has been a battle ever since this property was purchased by the individual, and I dealt with Rod before he retired, and I've been dealing with Nate. So it's not something new, and we've been making some progress, but there's still progress to be made. The battle has been continuous, but I have been working even harder since April of 2022, and I'm currently waiting for the issue to be resolved. I've been in contact with Nate. I got out a calendar and marked it, and pretty much Nate has been getting an email from me every week since April. So I'm a pest. And I contacted Nate on May 18th to see how the progress was going, and I was told that the property owner had contacted him, and he knew that they had received the letter, and they told Nate that they were going to get it taken care of. He told me that he was going to give them every chance to get it taken care of before getting the attorney involved. And the property owner had told him it would be taken care of the following weekend. And he said if it wasn't, he would forward it on to the city attorney. And he said he was willing to work with people, and I totally understand that. But now I'm here on October 17th, and the issue still isn't dealt with. I contacted Nate back on September 19th, I think it was, and he told me they have until November 9th to comply with the letter they were served, the infraction. And so my question is, you know, we have these city ordinances. If we have them, why aren't they enforced? And if they're going to be enforced, why aren't they enforced in a timely manner? I mean, from August to October now, you know, and Nate's been working on it. I get that. But I just think that, if I'm not mistaken, I think you adopted the Iowa code as far as cities are concerned, and it's just too much time. Five months is just too much time to get people to deal with these issues. If you walk or drive through town, you'll see numerous properties with boarded-up windows, junk vehicles. Some of those vehicles have flat tires, some have weeds that are a foot tall growing around them, junk in yards. And from how I read the ordinances, they're not in compliance. Properties that have been cited in the past should be kept up on, because I know the one I'm dealing with, in the past, it's sort of been cleaned up, and it's been a little bit better. But then a week later, junk starts moving in again. So it's just never-ending. The second issue I urge the council to address is people living in campers, vans, other vehicles, sheds, and tents during any season of the year. Last year, at the October meeting, I came to you asking for help with people living in a nuisance vehicle in my neighborhood. I came back during the winter and spring of 2022 to ask the council about the progress of this situation. I knew for a fact that there was no running water, no sewer hookups or heat. There were two extension cords running from the camper to different outlets on the neighboring property. There was junk piled around the camper, garbage, food scraps. And then finally, late last April, the owner of the camper finally did remove the vehicles. But it took, again, from October to April to get that done. Then over the summer, a tent city sprung up on the property of, it's 620-something, I couldn't get a good address, Third Avenue West. It's right across from the entrance to the fairgrounds. This property has boarded-up doors and windows, broken-down vehicles, filled full of junk. And then over the summer, there were two or three tents with people living in them. The tents were put up around a fire ring. They had ropes strung across with laundry hanging on it. Then towards the end of September, the tents did come down, but then a camper appeared and was parked on the property. On October 4th, I was walking past the camper. I heard a dog bark from inside, and there were lights on inside the camper. And then just last Monday, as I was walking by, a woman came out of the camper. I've been told by several different people that there's an individual who's living in a non-running RV on a property that is on Pine Place across from McAllister's. And, you know, it's not a good situation. I haven't seen a person come in or out of that camper, but I just see it when I drive by from the backside. I know it's there. It's half-covered with the tars. So I'm asking the city council to look into, you know, adopting an ordinance forbidding people to live in campers, RVs, vehicles, tents, sheds, anything that is not a house or an apartment. This type of living situation is not safe or sanitary for the people living there, and it's also undesirable for the people who have to live next to it. Fire, disease, vermin, and questionable people are just a few reasons that I think you need to consider adopting some sort of ordinance against that. So I'm happy, if any of you would like to speak with me at any time, I'm happy to answer questions. I have a whole file folder full of emails that Nate and I have been sending back and forth. So I just think, you know, the city could attract a lot more people and businesses if it was cleaned up a little bit. And like I said, when I walk, I see all of this stuff from the bike trail and places like that. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Representative Mike Bergen with us, State Representative. He's going to get up and talk for a couple minutes, I believe.
Yeah, I just wanted to introduce myself. So thank you, Mayor Bruno. I'm Mike Bergen, State Representative, and from Winnebago County. I've served three terms with the district that comprises of portions of Winnebago, Fayette, and Clayton County. With the 2000 Census and the redistricting process, the entirety of Winnebago, entirety of Howard, and then four townships in the northern part of Fayette County make up New District 63. So I'm running for reelection in that regard. So I just take this opportunity as I'm here for the EV ribbon cutting that took place at Fairway, just to introduce myself to you and certainly offer to work with the city of Crasco on issues and projects going forward. And then, of course, assuming reelection takes place. I do want to comment a little bit on my background. I've got a background in accounting. I've been an income tax preparer for over 35 years. But I've served eight years as a Winnebago County Supervisor, so I understand local governments from county perspective, interactions with a number of cities in Winnebago County at that point in time. My current district, legislative district, has been, I think there's 16 cities, 15 cities. Now there'll be 17 with the new configuration. And so I try to work consistently with your representation to the League of Cities, as well as Association of Counties at the Capitol, on issues that they impact with local government. While I've had an interest in serving on the local government committee, I have it because it meets, it's scheduled in the same meeting block time as Human Resources, and I've got a significant background working with Department of Human Services, Public Health, early childhood services in those areas. So I'm focusing on that Human Resources, that Health and Human Services area in the process. I've served on the Health and Human Services budget for the first four years. I'm now chairing the admin and reg budgets, which oversees, I think, 17 state departments' their budgets across that area. Another job that I have or participation in is Iowa Communities Assurance Pool. The Iowa Communities Assurance Pool provides liability and property coverage for member organizations from cities, counties, and other 2008 local government entities and county fair associations. And so 300 and some cities are involved with ICAP, 77 counties, about 60 of the fairs, and then 300, almost 400 other entities are involved with that. And that keeps me very well in tune to the issues around, you know, liability claims. Certainly, property claims has been significant with storms, hail damage, deratio, you know, tornadoes we had that impacted Marshalltown, for example, keep me in tune with that. And with ICAP also partners with Association of Counties and the cities on that aspect as well. So I try to keep an awareness level with the cities, and certainly reading the minutes in the local paper is a convenient way to just kind of keep tabs on it. But with, you know, looking at 17 cities in a district, if there are some specific issues that you need to be addressed, is to interact with the state law application. There's some of those concerns. I appreciate you reaching out. An email works well. Certainly, a phone call works as well.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Anybody else have any comments? They want to come up? If not, we're going to move on to our regular business tonight. The first thing on the agenda is WHKS is here to present the proposal, the proposed Downtown Crosswalk Reconstruction Special Assessment Project. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bruno. I'm Darren Sicking from WHKS, for those that don't know me very well. And then also with me tonight is Scott Honeyking. He's a staff engineer with us as well. So he, since we have a couple different projects going on in town, a lot going on around the area, so Scott's also assisting us with these two projects. So you'll see Scott and I at these meetings, and we're both in tune with what's going on. So, but just to kind of get into the proposed Downtown Sidewalk, or Crosswalk Sidewalk Project, we're doing these because it is a special assessment project. So as part of that, special assessments are a very regimented process, so you need to go through and have the, go through all the different steps. And so the bonding attorney has kind of prepared a lot of those steps, and you'll be acting on those later today after we kind of go through our presentation here. So, but just so you know, that there's a reason behind all of these different steps. So I'm going to have Scott talk a little bit about the Crosswalk Sidewalk Project, and just kind of specifically what that project is all about. So.
All right. So I want to hand out a couple things to you all. I have a cost opinion on an existing map. It looks like something you already have, some of these things, but just hand them out again.
All right. So I'm going to summarize the engineering report that we put together for the Downtown Crosswalk Construction Project. Briefly, this project is on Elm Street from First Avenue to Third Avenue. The driver of the project is to replace the existing colored crosswalks and the pedestrian ramps, and with that, the existing sidewalks in front of the businesses to make them ADA compliant. So what we did is we took a look at the existing water sewer and storm utilities that the city operates. We took a look at the existing street and sidewalk condition, and proposed new sidewalk widths and typical sections, and then put together a cost opinion, as you all can see now. Starting with the water system, the water main on Elm Street was put in in 1983. It's an existing eight-inch water main that's in good condition. Typically, we expect a hundred years service life out of there, and that existing eight-inch pane is less than half of that length. So we would recommend leaving that water main in place. One thing that we did learn while we were doing this report is that the existing curb stops along there are hard to get onto and difficult to operate, and some of them are non-operational. So we do have in the cost opinion to replace those valve boxes, not the valves themselves, but the boxes that go from the ground up to the surface. The sanitary sewer system, which you can see on the second page on the map, it's the yellow line. It crosses the two alleyways between First and Second, and then Second and Third Street. So really, not along Elm Street very much, except for those crossings. Those two, we would run a camera through prior to the project, just to make sure everything's good, but we would both leave that in place as long as there's not an existing break there. And the storm sewer system, that's shown in the purple color there, there's 24 intakes. It's all precast and RCP pipe. Those we would recommend leaving in place unless they are in conflict with the new ADA compliant ramps. So at the intersections, right at the corner, we'll have to do some work to make those softer, I'll call it. And if some of those intakes are in the way, we'll have to move them out of the way to get the ramps in. Another unique thing about this project is it's down, it's in historical downtown, and we've experienced other projects where old coal shoots or vaults are in these old buildings, and they can cause problems. So actually, Councilmember Kneer and Public Works Director Woodell, and myself, went into 42 of the 41 of the 48 buildings, saw a lot of interesting things. But we luckily saw that in 1983, a lot of these coal shoots and vaults were correctly sealed up, and there was not a whole lot of issues. We do have some contingency in the cost opinion in case we do find something unexpected, but 95% of the basements in there were in good condition. So that was good to find out. As far as the street goes, the existing street is in relatively good condition, with the exception of the crosswalks. Those crosswalks, we're recommending getting, pulling those out and putting new concrete in there. And then the sidewalk is in, it's in fair condition, but it does not meet the ADA requirements. So that's really the driver of replacing all of those sidewalks with the crosswalk and pedestrian ramps. So lastly, I'll just talk about the opinion and cost. We do have the breakdown that I handed out there. We have contingency in there, engineering in there, and legal fees included in there. And those are based on 2023 construction costs. And finally, recommendations. There is a column on the right side that includes assessable percentages and assessable amounts. This project is feasible from the engineering standpoint. For city policy, 50% of the overall project costs, including water main intersections, sanitary sewer, and storm sewers, have been assessed, and that's what we show in this cost opinion. And then also on this one, sidewalks have not been assessed in the past, but city staff is recommending to assess 90% of sidewalks to the property owner and for the city to pay 10% of those costs for the project. So with that being said, on the average for the 47 parcels on the project, the assessment is around $4,900. With that, I'll open it up for questions, if you have any.
So a lot of what, and one of the last things Scott was saying, and it's open for discussion, is that if something new would be, in the past, sidewalks have always been the property owner's responsibility. So therefore, 100% of that sidewalk cost would have been on the property owner. Having, staff having talked to the bonding attorney, the attorney was not thinking 100% assessable was a number that would be defendable. But, so city staff kind of discussed that a little bit and came up with the 90-10 split. So that is just a staff recommendation, but that's open for discussion if the council wants to adjust that.
And this is, you're estimating for next year?
Yes.
And what do you estimate the cement price going up, for instance?
Well, we put it in here just kind of an overall cost. So just the concrete block itself was, where's the concrete? Eight bucks a square foot. So it's higher than what we had, you know, previously seen around here. So we took inflation into account, factor that in. With prices varying wildly, it may come in more, it may come in less. But we're, at this point, we're estimating that's kind of where we feel it's going to come in.
And how thick would the sidewalk itself be?
Sidewalk itself is four inches.
Four inches, okay.
At the pedestrian ramps themselves, those are six inches. Just to get the steel plates in there and everything worked, those are made to be six inches thick.
Very early on, when we were talking about the sidewalk project, and I noted there were a couple places where it appears that the sidewalk is actually sunk, and they seem to be under the statues. And they seem to be under the statues. So my question is, did you look at those? Are we okay on those? And what are we doing about the statues?
Okay, so, so yes, we, we did think about that. There was discussion about making sure we kind of have specific spots for the statues, and then that we would have like either a thickened concrete slab or something a little more reinforced for where those are. But then, that's kind of where they need to go. They, you know, someone can't just move them around willy-nilly. It's kind of, they'll have their specific spots. So yes, we did. But they would just be, just those individual areas. We wouldn't thicken the whole sidewalk just for those statues.
Just so long as we don't end up three years later with a little pit where it's sunk.
Correct. And how many statues are we talking about?
I don't know.
I don't remember what the number was. I know it was on one of those estimates.
When, if it's something we choose to do, when would you expect a bid to happen?
We would expect kind of in the spring. So we have, do you have the schedule? Okay. We, we kind of have a schedule that kind of runs both these projects kind of concurrently. So because they would be assessed, so you still have to go through the assessment process. So tonight, you have the resolutions to pass. If you were to pass those resolutions, you'd be looking to set like, to have a public hearing sometime in November. And the date can be selected, what works for you guys' schedule. But then, what we're looking at is kind of getting plans ready, having both projects ready by March. The sidewalk maybe could be a little quicker, because it's not as large. But then receiving bids like beginning of April, kind of that time thing. So be ready for 2023 construction.
Sure.
Now, this is kind of a weird question, but on ADA ramps, you have the little bumpy things?
Yes.
Is that item nineteen called truncated domes?
Truncated domes, that's the official term for those steel plates that are pushed into the concrete, yes.
Wasn't a discussion, you have to have forty-eight inches of level concrete on, on the ADA, and then a slope to the curb?
Yeah, so one thing that I kind of breezed over there was, so currently the sidewalks between the building face and the curb is between ten and fourteen feet. What we would be proposing to do is, is creating a pedestrian access route or par that's coming out from the building face, six to eight feet, which is basically level. That's where like a wheelchair path would be going from. And then from there to the curb, we call that the bull bar, which is going to be steeper than that. So there'd be a great break as you come out of the building, it'd be flat, and then it'll come a little bit steeper towards the curb.
Correct. And then even also at like the ramps themselves, there needs to be a, what's called a landing, which is basically a four-foot square that you can, someone in a wheelchair could go to and then navigate either turn left or right, or whichever way they're going. So then there's a flat spot, so they're not fighting against a slope of some kind to, to make it up, up the ramp itself, so.
Is the thought to bring it, the curb or the concrete flush from the building out? Or are we going to try to cut?
It, it's going to be kind of a tough design to figure out where that spot is, because not all building doors are, are the same. And there's some that have steps, and some that will probably remain. The steps will probably remain, because you can't put a roller coaster through your sidewalk. So some of that, some of those anomalies will remain at door fronts, but trying to make the, as Scott said, the pedestrian access route as ADA compliant as the city possibly can make it.
The other thing I'd like to note on that is, a lot of the buildings have the alcoves that kind of jut into the building. The plan, as we have laid out, would be taking it from the building front and cutting it off right there and not going into each of those alcoves. Because what we're finding inside of there is that the bracing or the formwork from there was, a lot of the times, was wooden braced, with a couple of thin, then load boards, and then some concrete on top of it, where all of a sudden, the city goes in there and takes that portion out, then we'll have to figure out how to re-put that false work.
Right, so basically, it's from the building front to the curb is what's getting done. So there might be little slivers of old concrete that would be left, but that's on private property that we prefer not to touch for other reasons, really, for structural or otherwise.
The curb is being replaced in this program.
Yes, the curb is being replaced as part of this, and that's part of the assessment.
And, and there's.
And then the crosswalks as well.
Yeah, and there's eight or nine crosswalks now. I forget what we're going to change that to?
So the, as staff was recommending, just regular gray plain concrete, not any sort of stamped or colored concrete. So just removing enough for the damaged portion of the core concrete. And then there's some that have, you know, cracks near them. We've cut those off and then just re-pour back just regular gray concrete.
Because we were not going to keep all of the, all of them, correct?
Correct.
How many were we going to keep?
We would strike, re-stripe new crosswalks where, where they would, but it would no longer be color, it would just be paint.
Yeah, and how many would we be keeping?
I think we have one on First, two on Second, and one on Third in the east-west direction. And then you would put them back at South Park.
North Park and, and South Park, yeah. So, one, two, three, four, five, six.
So get rid of two of them, I think.
Two or three, I think.
Yeah, okay. And I forget the order of things. So if we decide, yes, we want to do this tonight, I know there's some assessments that have been predicted or drawn up, and the bid comes in more or less than what the assessments are showing today, will they be adjusted, or are they in stone once we start this?
So, once you start, in Iowa, the preliminary number is the top, and it can only go down.
Okay.
So if, if the bids come in a lot higher than, than what's estimated, and the city still wants to proceed, that's the most they can assess. Unless you wanted to restart the process over and say, okay, this, this was underestimated, we're going to need to restart the process and go through it again and add a higher value, if, if that's what, what the council decides.
Yeah, okay.
I see you have an item for turf restoration. And I was going to ask if that's tree work, because the bank has trees. So my first question is, are the trees going to live through this? Or are we making provisions for them to live through it? And the second is, what's the turf restoration?
Turf is by the courthouse itself.
Oh, okay.
So we are.
It's like next to the sidewalk?
Yeah, it's going to be right next to the sidewalk. At that, generally, you have, everything out here is hard surface. But the courthouse has some grass there, so we're, we will, something will be damaged there, so we'll have to fix it. The trees, I, I think I'll maybe ask Michelle, because the trees were actually purchased by the bank back in the day.
Yep, so actually Nate's been talking to Scott Thompson.
Yeah, and Scott said, once we get closer and we decide whether or not we're actually going through it with this, he'd like to sit down and discuss it. He's not sure if he wants to keep them there, if he wants to put something else in there, or what he wants to do at the moment, so.
Although they are really nice.
Right, and so he does. Right, so he does know about this, but he said, once, once we decide which way we want to go, that he'll sit down and talk with us, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
So, the next step is, besides all the legal work, but, would be to set the public hearing. So for the public hearing, we need to mail out notices to all of the property owners, and we have to publish it two times.
Correct.
So we have to be kind of careful on when we set that. It cannot be before November seventh, because I can't physically do it all by the timeline. So that would be the very first day that we could.
So the twenty-first is the third Monday, or December fifth would be the next meeting?
November seventh is our next meeting.
Right, November seventh, and then that's the, the day before Election Day, just if that matters. And then the other part that we were just discussing was, it's kind of in conjunction with the Seventh Street project. If you wanted to, to have both assessment hearings the same night, you know, have them like an hour apart, have, you can, or have them separate nights, so you can kind of, which, which way you want to go there, just to. It's up to you guys if you want to split them or have them the same night, hour apart, or whatever, so.
Is there a lot of work to do for you, for both of those then? I mean, is the second meeting in November too soon?
Well, no, we need to, I, we were thinking more of the first meeting, weren't we?
The first meeting, the seventh, was the meeting we kind of had, or date penciled out. But it also doesn't have to be on a council night. It could be separate as well, if you so chose.
But you'd have it done by November seventh, what you need to do?
Yes.
Okay.
Nobody can bother me this week.
You've yourself plenty of time, don't back yourself in a corner with it.
So, well, with the timeline, you kind of have to keep moving on it, so.
There, it's very regimented on how soon, and then there's design, so then that takes time, and then, then you, so it's just a matter of, if you can keep it wall-rolling, that, that's the better choice, so.
You could do both of them?
I, I would prefer to do them both in one night, like an hour apart, would be my recommendation, but you guys can do what you want to do.
I think this one, the people are a little more prepared for this one, so maybe do this one first. There wouldn't be maybe as many questions.
In the night, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I would find to do.
So shoot for November seventh?
And so we'll set that later, is one of our things. But I just wanted to talk about it, so.
Okay.
Hurry up and pass resolutions without.
Yeah. All right, any more questions then on the sidewalk? We'll move on to the next, next on the agenda then. That's a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an engagement agreement with Alers and Cooney, PC regarding the Downtown Crosswalk Reconstruction Special Assessment Project.
So moved.
I'll make the motion in a second.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number three, preliminary, preliminary resolution for the construction of crosswalks, sidewalks, pedestrian ramps, and other public improvements in the city of Cresco, State of Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Okay. Number four, resolution, resolution fixing values of lots. Can you give us a little explanation on that, please?
So, that's, after investigation, it's taking the preliminary assessment schedule as the council values. So the council values come from the Howard County Assessor's Office. And so they assess each of the properties, and then we added the value of the project to that value. Because you cannot assess more than twenty-five percent of their assessed value for improvements. And so that, that value is very important, if there's a deficiency or not.
Right, and I see, I see there was some on the, on the Seventh Street.
Yeah, I don't think there are any deficiencies on this one.
Nope, I don't think so, so. So you just need a resolution that, that the lot values are, okay.
There's that. I'll make the resolution in a second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
And Buska?
Yes.
Next is number five, resolution adopting preliminary plat and schedule, estimate and cost of proposed plans for specifications for the construction of the Downtown Crosswalk Reconstruction.
And this is where we have to set the public hearing.
Set the public hearing?
So for November seventh, at five-thirty?
That was the motion?
So do we want to do regular council meeting first, and then the public hearing, like, say, six o'clock?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay, six o'clock then?
Or immediately following our regular meeting?
It's not a hard time. It's not a hard time, six o'clock.
Okay, good. Okay, now, Carmen?
Yep.
Was it, yeah, did we have a second?
Gary?
Okay.
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
And number six is a resolution of necessity.
And this is stating, you're stating that this is a project that needs to be done for the public purpose?
So moved.
Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Number seven, WHKS to present the proposed Seventh Street West Reconstruction Special Assessment Project. That's been a while, boys.
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so similar to our last discussion here, so Scott's handing out, just kind of our cost opinion, and, and then just a map, kind of showing the project area. So this is a project that we've discussed previously. Last year, we kind of went through some of these numbers, and then kind of knowing that it would be coming up and scheduling it. And so again, going through the assessment process, it's very regimented. So we have this formal report that we've created to meet that. And then also to kind of update costs since last year. As most of you know, the construction prices have gone up considerably, so we have made some changes to the, what we discussed last year, and I'll, I'll talk about those a little bit further, trying to maybe reduce costs. But the costs overall have gone up since the last time you kind of heard about this project, so. So what this project is, is Seventh Street from essentially Highway Nine up to Fourth Avenue. So generally, in this area, one of the main drivers is the water main in this section. It is in a curve shape. It's, first, it's undersized, it's, it's a four-inch, it's a four-inch main, but there's been numerous breaks on that section of road. And when you drive it, you can kind of see the, all the patches that are in the road because of, of the poor water main in that area. So sanitary sewer, there are proposing to redo that as well, but that's not the whole length of the project. That is the southerly portion, south of Stock Avenue to Highway Nine. That area is where the sanitary sewer work would be done. That, that's old clay pipe in there, and so we would recommend that getting closed at the same time. Okay, another main item for the project is storm sewer and its collection system for this project. There's a number of things going on. One, kind of north of the, the trail, kind of by the county shop, is an old sinkhole that currently storm sewer dumps into. Sinkholes should, should not be used as stormwater outlets, and so the Iowa DNR has indicated that the city should, should eliminate that. That's actually been many, many years that the DNR said that should happen. So as part of this project, we would be looking to get rid of that sinkhole or just cap the sinkhole, and then collect that water, and then drain it south, south of Highway Nine. So it's kind of, there's right now where the trail is, the old railroad bed, that's kind of a high point. That water previously wouldn't go over that little knob or hill. So by putting in the storm sewer, we're going to try and, we're going to make it go south versus going north. make it go south versus going north that it pour into that sinkhole as it currently does.
Would that would there still be a high point there then or?
So the railroad there's the railroad old railroad bed, we're gonna try and when we do the road, try and knock some of that so it's not such a
Yeah.
steep or significant drop or bump but it still be the high point of the road, generally things will drain north and south from that but um but the storm sewer will collect it on the north side and get it get it to the south side.
Get it down that way, yeah.
But also too, there's a low point in Seventh Street near the Long John Silver's A&amp;W H&amp;S Motors site there so that area that storm sewer is undersized, there's also water that comes off of Highway 9 that goes into that spot and there's been flooding reported at that spot a number of times and so it's only way for it to get out is to go across H&amp;S's property which obviously if you have lots of cars there that doesn't you know work very well either so the staff is recommending that we're putting in storm sewer that's large enough to kind of handle that low point as well as the additional water that's north of the the old railroad bed there so that's a pretty significant cost to this project and also in the past we've had discussions about what's the appropriate storm event that we should be designing for typically cities designed for a ten-year storm event and this project with past discussions with council were had increased that to a over a 25-year storm event and that's historical, I know Amy you kind of questioned if it should be predictive engineering wise, we've always stood by the historical event but knowing that recently storms have had greater impacts and some of those old data points are not as accurate as what's currently occurring so considering that the typical standard is a ten-year event and sizing it for greater than a 25-year event is one of the things we looked at, also one of the things we looked at with the storm sewer is that there's kind of a physical limitation to that pipe so what's being proposed in this project is the pipe from the low point going south under Highway 9 and further south on Seventh down by Pipeheadler is where it would outlet is a 48-inch pipe and so that's getting to be about the largest pipe you can put in without it physically coming out of the ground, you're gonna want to have some cover over that pipe and some cover as it goes under the highway but anything greater than that and you're starting to like it it just can't get any bigger, there's a limit to how big you can put a pipe in so so right now what's being proposed is a 48-inch pipe to handle that water from the low point going south down by Plant Peddler's site. So then the the last thing I want to talk about is the street, so the current street is a fairly wide street and one of the things that we we considered staff discussed was did it need to be that wide the whole length and so what staff is recommending is that the area just north of Highway 9 remain the same width but then as it goes just beyond that, just beyond the the H&amp;S Motors um A&amp;W site area, that it would be narrowed up to the city standard street width which would be 31 feet and so that way you would save about what do we say six feet of concrete ish of width so help trying to help reduce costs since you as you get further north it's you have the county shop and the city or the excuse me the county fairgrounds and then some residential so staff felt as you went further north, the need to have a wider street wasn't really there so so as a cost-saving measure, we we propose it to be narrower as you went further north. And then one last thing, so as part of the storm water, we're also where it's discharging is out as I mentioned, south on Seventh Street near Plant Peddler's warehouse, then it would run down a waterway then get out to the airport's property, in the past we've talked about having a stormwater pond and we use the pond loosely because of we've as we've discovered with the airport being there, the FAA doesn't want actual water in the pond after 48 hours and the reason for that is they don't want migratory birds like ducks and geese living out at the end of the airport runway because airplanes and large birds don't tend to mix very well so they basically recommend that that pond be a dry pond so within 48 hours that pond has to not have any water in it and so the pond would essentially just slow the water down before it goes out of town and then would slowly meter itself out is what it would do over 48 hours and then it still has to have kind of a safe overflow so if you got a big large rain event, it can just top top the the berm and just go about its merry ways so 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 that's still proposed as part of this project. As the last project, this is an assessment project so again you wouldn't assess for your utilities so water main sewer and storm sewers would not be assessed and neither would intersections but you would assess for the street costs is what, excuse me, street costs are the main thing that are being assessed in this area so a typical residential assessment in the $9,500 range but there are six commercial properties that are fairly large and then those properties their assessments are average $59,000 so that's kind of the where we're at as far as the dollars go assessment wise. But oh and then the pot the pond itself would not be and the ceiling of the sinkhole would not be assessed so those those things are not assessable.
But they're part of the project.
They are part of the project but they aren't assessable.
Yeah.
Great, so I'm sure a lot of you have questions.
Um I noticed that you changed the location south of the highway, it used to be over by Airport Road if I recall the first discussion.
So so yeah, so we one of the original discussions where this was discharging, we were talking about connecting into the storm sewer near Highway 9 and that what that's what it currently does and it'll run oh two things, the low point runs across H&amp;S Motors site, that's where the the pipes that run for that but some of the highway water runs down Highway 9 to the west towards Implement Dealer and then south towards the airport. So one of the things that came up during discussions were we can actually connect to that pipe and then just run straight south along Seventh Street to the waterway there but still keeping the current pipe active so it allows for the storm sewer to have two outlets which will then create kind of a a safety factor for these heavy rain events so it will the the new pipe will be lower and will be the main storm sewer but then if it fills up what do we say two feet about two feet well then it will spill into the second pipe and so some water will be going south on Seventh and some will be going down towards the Implement Dealer and then out to the airport, eventually get to the same point which will be the pond but in the interim, they'll have two ways for the water to get out, that was kind of a an idea that came about saying well this this gives you the most flexibility as far as the storm sewer system.
Um so now I'm looking at Nate now that you've answered that question, do we have the necessary easements?
Uh yeah, those will all be worked out, I've 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 talked to
Gooder?
Gooder, yep, and he's all on board with us, he's willing to do what we need to do and as far as that retention basin goes, I'm gonna call it retention basin, I have been in contact with Hunter at the NRCS office as well, looking for grant opportunities to help offset some of that cost so he's meeting with some of his financial people and seeing what he can come up with as well.
And that's almost all on city owned property?
Correct.
Two questions, just pardon my, that line that goes across H&amp;S, that's an existing line already?
Right.
So we don't have that's that two foot one you're talking about?
Yeah, so the existing pipe is there, I don't remember the size right off the top of my head but it's undersized, it's very much undersized.
Okay, and then this pond that you're gonna put out there at the airport, is that gonna be a rap pond filled with like a rap rock to take that overflow for erosion and stuff of that nature?
Yeah, so what we're envisioning is that it's 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 a retention basin as Nate indicated that it'll have probably some sort of sand or filter bottom to it with a bunch of tile in it to kind of wick the water away but then it'll also have kind of an outlet structure that'll take higher flows and kind of make sure that the water gets out of there over 48 hours, the what the FAA recommends is that it's it's maintained so they don't want any not just migratory birds but any wildlife really living out there so essentially what we believe it needs to be is kind of a a grass area, now where it's gonna overtop, that could maybe have some riprap and some armoring but generally it should be probably a grass dry dry pond, something that can be molded.
Understood.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm always full of questions, David. A lot of the water that's a problem here is coming off the co-op land, north of A&amp;W, I mean you can stand there and you can watch a surge come out of there, when you're talking to Hunter, have we talked to them about
We did, we did talk to them.
Getting back into there?
And asked them if they could come up with any ideas, immediately he could not, he understood issues because they'd worked with us before on it but he was going to keep thinking about it and see if we could work with when co-op and see if we could do something to slow the water down up there but yeah, Hunter was not really aware of any programs that they had available and so then we said, well, we're just looking for ideas of what we could put in there so we have planted the seed and so I think hopefully they'll help us.
When I talked to Neil, what he told me about that waterway, whatever you call it, was it was built to prevent erosion, not to slow it down really and
It doesn't, it comes out fast.
Yeah, it really comes storming out of there so, okay, so we can follow up on that and now my last question, which probably is the longest answer, is boy, did I gulp when I saw the number on this, what happens if we stopped at Second Avenue West and didn't do the north part?
Um that that is an opportunity, yes, it can be it can be scaled to whatever the council soul wants to.
I mean you want to fix the sinkhole and you want to fix and you want to try to get Second Avenue West because they've had some flooding up there.
Right, correct, and and so you'd still set up the storm sewer system to be extended in the future, it just would you would just stop at whatever spot intersection you wanted to stop at and yes and and yes, the dollars unfortunately have gone up, that's where we've seen 20% increases in a lot of things over the last year.
But but you had run an option, remember, they did an option just going partway up and it was almost as expensive and council said, no, if we're gonna do that much, we're gonna go all the way up, so when you say Second Avenue, are you talking Highway 9 or you're talking Second Avenue West?
Highway 9 and Second Avenue West, but you're avoiding half of the concrete round numbers.
Yeah, right.
But the expensive part is the storm sewer.
You'll still have a lot of storm sewers still south of 9 that are isn't assessable so.
I I just look at this and I say, you know, we're working on the capital improvement plan and we see lots of other things that need done too and is the north half of this as bad?
Water main is the whole key, so if we stop there, we're gonna have a little piece of four inch that has so many water main breaks in it so we'll keep breaking up that that highway and we'll be having to replace it in patches.
Darren, didn't we also talk about if we stopped at Second Avenue West that it actually would impact Third Avenue and Sixth Avenue for storm sewers?
Yeah, so what what currently kind of happens or at least you know in previous discussions when Rob was here that there's storm sewer issues coming down Second, their pipes aren't functioning like they should mainly I think because things have backed up from going into the sinkhole, they don't they're just can't get away and I think some of the pipes were full of dirt and things like that so that was another big part of this was to kind of put new storm sewer in low enough so that it could take that away and keep the velocity of the water in the pipe to keep that stuff from you know backing up but yes, there was some issues with the storm sewer, it would overflow into other storm sewers that would run north out of town.
With with narrowing up Seventh Street West, what do we run into then as far as parking, is it just singles single side of the road then in that area?
It would just, yeah, I think it was it's up to the council but yeah, typically it's just say it's single parking on one side or the other.
I know there's no I know there's currently no parking at least on the west side, I'm not sure about the east side.
We don't think there's parking on either side right now.
Especially by the fairgrounds, there's signs that say no parking this side.
We didn't know that either, totally wrong.
I was just sitting here thinking, oh man, if that reduces the parking for the fair but never mind.
Yeah, I don't think I don't think they park on Seventh Street but they park on Second Street and Third.
Okay, well, I must be dreaming then.
Well, we kind of thought that too but there's no parking signs on
At least on the west side, not fairground side.
Okay, any other questions?
So very similar to the previous ones, so we're looking to set up public hearings and we've already kind of got one set so we can pick a similar day and time so.
Okay, all right, thank you. So we'll move on to number eight on the agenda tonight and that's a resolution authorizing the mayor.
Do you think do we need to discuss it because I don't want to pass a few of the resolutions and then have councils say they don't want to go forward with it, do you want to discuss it before we move forward or?
I I hear what you're saying about the water main but honestly unless I misunderstood something, if if the four inch main breaks, you're gonna have to dig up the old concrete, right, you're not gonna have to dig up the new concrete.
Right, it's at it's it's already old, yes.
Yeah, so I just think there are a lot of other streets that have stinky four inch mains that are breaking that are maybe as worse even worse than this and so.
You're thinking more of just going to Second Avenue West?
Or whatever the engineers tell us, we gotta get to Second Avenue West and we gotta get to the sinkhole.
Well, Second Avenue West is kind of right where the sinkhole is, right there by the dump shop.
Darren, do you recall the difference in price between stopping earlier versus later?
I don't, I'll knock on my head, sorry, no I don't.
There's an area between Second and Third though right across from the fairgrounds that, I mean, the road is completely gone, there there's no patching, in front of the Kriener property there, it's one of those deals where the trucks go through and plates vibrate in the house, the road's that bad so.
To answer that question, Alex, now these are on the old numbers that were a year old so it was 2,684,325 and if we were to stop it and I believe that was before Second.
Right, I believe that was at Stock.
And that price was 966,010.
That's at Stock though, right?
Right, I was gonna say I believe that's at Stock.
So that would be a lot less, we'd have to add a lot to that.
We'd have to go to Second Avenue or Third.
Oh, is it? The ratio would probably be
Because then that did not include the the sinkhole.
Yeah.
You'd have to add the sinkhole into that as well plus the rest of the concrete so I think it's gonna be pretty close.
If we were if we were to shrink a little bit of the project
It's going to be over half, or maybe you end up half.
You know, let's say we shaved off, I don't know, 200 feet of concrete. Obviously, there's a savings there in water main and sewer, if necessary. The mobilization fee of $100,000, that probably wouldn't change?
It's generally, the number that's put in there is kind of a percentage of the overall project. So as the project goes down, the mobilization goes down a little bit.
Okay.
It's a way to pay for fixed costs of the contractor.
Okay. So if we cut out 25% of the project, we wouldn't necessarily cut out 25% of the expense?
But we're not cutting, I mean, according to the numbers that Michelle just read, we're cutting out over half.
Yeah, but that only went to here.
Oh, but even so, so this was noticeably less than half. So you get it over the hump, and you add the... So maybe it's a, you're at 60% of the cost and saving 40%.
Then you're also going to lose most of the assessments. Because if you're only going to here, there's only going to be four properties assessed. So the assessments are going to be...
They'll get assessed when we do the north part.
Well, I know when we talked about it before, we agreed that we thought it would be better to do the whole thing at one time.
And I think it would be. I just don't think we have the money. I mean, at the very least, I would want to view the north part in the context of the capital improvement plan. Because to me, the south part is kind of an emergency. We can't have water running into H and S bays, and we got to do something about it. The north part is not that kind of an emergency. To me, that belongs in the capital, you know, you're going to look to have the capital improvement plans back this Friday. And I think the north part of Seventh Avenue is part of that, if I recall?
The whole Seventh. It was Seventh Street all the way, it was this project.
Yeah.
And it was very poor, it was 1 point, so.
I mean, I'm, I, everyone should make up their own mind. I will just vote no, not because I'm opposed to the whole project, but because I want to see Seventh Avenue against our other needs. I mean, sorry, the north part of Seventh Avenue against our other needs.
Okay.
So do you want them to run a cost estimate of what it would be to go up to Second Avenue and take care of the sinkhole in that project as well?
If, if that's possible, that would be useful. Otherwise, I'll just assume that we're losing 40% of the cost.
Then we have to start all over because then attorneys will have to review everything again because the project changed. But just so you understand that...
I'm fine with that.
We're not going to make our same schedule then. So I guess that's one opinion, remember one person.
It's a substantial amount of money, you know, going forward. And you're saying, Amy, it's cheaper to dig up the old street and if we have to go in and do sewer repair and stuff of that nature?
No, I'm, I'm just saying, I had understood, Darren, to be saying that we would have to dig up the concrete. And I just want to make clear that we're digging a old concrete and not new concrete. I'd love to have a better sewer main, and we need it. I'm just not convinced today that... Because I say there are a lot of other streets that need bigger than a four-inch main and need new street, too. I just don't think it's the emergency that the south part is.
And you're saying from Second Avenue North or from the rural drapes?
I would look to Darren to give us the exact cutoff point. We'd want to include the sinkhole, and I think Second Avenue's had some, Rich, your mom used to live there. Didn't she have some backup problems?
All along that street. Because I think part of that problem all went up to all the way to Granger Road.
Right. I think there was, wasn't there some discussion that it might help at Granger Road and the church, maybe?
Right, it just depends on if that line, that line on Second Avenue still is probably undersized. But I think some of it's due to it doesn't really have a, it doesn't have a great outlet. It goes into a sinkhole, so that's as fast as the water that needs that pipe. So once it has a better outlet, I would say that it's going to function better.
I think you mentioned last year that was pretty flat, that pipe.
Yes, that pipe is very flat.
Not much fall.
Correct.
So, Michelle, you're saying if we choose to have them reevaluate it and just go from, say, Second Avenue southwest, south, we would need to go through the whole process again with the attorneys and everything?
Correct.
Okay.
Although we've, I mean, we've got the basis of it.
So for instance, the assessments, like for A and, or H and S and ANW, would that change then possibly?
Right.
Yes. It would definitely change. I, you know, it's maybe somewhat relative, but it may actually increase those because there's other fixed costs that, with the project, that would just go to those property owners versus spreading them out over more property owners.
Okay. How much time would it take you guys to do what we're talking about?
We could be back probably next, I don't know, what's the next meeting?
Seven.
But that's okay.
That would be the next, okay, that's our next, that's when the downtown one is. So yeah, I think we would have something by then.
Any other thoughts? I mean, there's, nobody else has really said a whole lot, I guess, is...
I just want to make sure we do the right thing with that Second Street because I have had a complaint from the landowner up there that built some buildings up here that never had water issues, and now is starting to have water issues in his basement because he thinks that the water doesn't get away from that area fast enough.
Second Street or Second?
Or Second Avenue.
Second Avenue, excuse me, across from the Lutheran Church the properties are up there. And, you know, and that water sits there and pools, you know, drains down slowly. But he seems to think that that might be part of the problem he's having with his basement now, so.
And that's why I think it's important to include Second Avenue.
Well, at least if we can, we can get the cost again, then we can go from there.
Would we need to go through the legal aspect and the assessments, just to see an estimate from them?
We could just get the estimate. We will not be able to act on it at all that night. If you went back to this one, then we'd already have all the documentations if we went back to the full project.
And Gary, your mom lives on the spot that might not get paved if that's the route. I don't know, without driving on the road, what it looks like there, but...
Well, it might have to be something where the street's going to have to be repaired. I mean, it's literally, it breaks up and it just keeps getting worse because of the semi-traffic across that, which is a whole nother issue going forward, needs to be discussed, so.
So it's just coming down from like feather, Donaldson's and Featherlight and all of it?
The semi-traffic on that road is atrocious.
Yeah, I believe it.
You know, I mean, that's probably the highest traffic road in our town twice a day, with Donaldson's, Featherlight.
And semi-traffic, too.
There's a lot of traffic up and down that road.
Thoughts, questions, motions?
Well, I agree with Amy. Let's take a look at it, let's get a figure. I mean, if it gets to that point where you're looking at a million dollars, I guess we'll, you know, we do our due diligence and look at all parts of it.
We've got the borrowing capacity for the whole project, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, plenty of room.
And the initial thought to do the whole project was because of the water mains?
How old are those mains underneath there? Any idea?
I don't know if we set or not.
Well, there's a good chance they're original.
That's my assumption, yes.
I think it's something worth discussing with their...
We did not say how old they were, but yeah, I would say that they're original to the city.
You know, discussing with their superintendents, you know, in water and sewer, you know, do we have any issues up there at blockage and collapse and...
The sanitary sewer's been lined. I wouldn't say it's great, though. I know Mike, I think Mike had actually put it on his CIP. And then the water main, Drew suggested replacing it. And that was one of the driving factors, if you're going to do this here.
That's on his, that's on his list, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And I know, I know the last time we talked about this, we discussed, you know, you can put in a new six-inch, go to old four main and connect back to another six-inch at Fourth Avenue. That's why we said, well, why are we just going to stop here and leave two blocks of old four-inch main? That was one of the things we discussed last time. I mean, I'm, I don't, I don't blame you guys for wanting a different cost estimate, but...
So there'd be two blocks then, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I think the whole project is absolutely worthy. I just don't know if there's a more worthy use for the million dollars or something.
Well, I can say of the 12 or 13 street projects we had ranked, this was, Seventh Street was the absolute worst by far.
It was number one.
By the three departments ranking, so.
And maybe that stands, yeah.
If that impacts.
Well, can we get a quote and still fall within our bid letting and meet all our deadlines and timelines with this?
Yeah, if, so like the schedule we've laid out, so the hearings won't be at the same time, but they would be closely following each other. You'll just have probably more meetings that you'll have to attend, so.
It may not be a bad idea to spread that out a little bit.
I don't, I don't think these are going to, this is going to be a real pleasant meeting.
I don't imagine it will be.
Jan or Alex, any thoughts?
I think as long as it falls into our bid, our bidding process and schedule, that we can look at it. Because it is a lot of money, but at the same point in time, is it just a Band-Aid temporarily to get us by, and then we revisit it later? And construction costs have gone up again. That's obviously from the last time that we looked at this to now, the construction costs are substantial, and it's not going down anytime too soon.
It's only going to continue to rise.
That's a given.
Do you foresee there any change in prices drastically in one direction or another in the...
Not significantly, no. As oil's one driving factor and just material and getting supplies. Hydrants, fire hydrants are hard to come by. Manholes are hard to come by. It's labor at factories. People are having a hard time with labor, getting people to make those things. So we have projects that are currently under construction that we don't know if we're going to finish just because of materials.
Another thing, too, we got to look at is how many times we're shutting down Seventh Street. You do it one year for a fair, and you do it the next year, too.
And that is, one thing we discussed was letting it sit over the winter because of the heavy traffic. That this is one project we would highly recommend doing all of the dirt work and the infrastructure one year. Let it sit over the winter and concrete it the following year.
So we're looking at next summer, late?
Doing the infrastructure and dirt work next summer. If we can get it out for bid in time. But if we go too late, then you don't get good bids because people already have their projects under it, so.
What are you guys seeing going forward, working with different communities as far as city projects like this? Is there a lot of interest out there? Are things just kind of been put on hold because of inflation and...
No, I think cities are still doing work just because there's always something that needs fixing. And as Michelle alluded to, as long as you're getting, you know, earlier portion of the year, then, yeah, the people, especially if you have a very flexible schedule, like doing the underground one year, the paving the next year, that's more attractive because it's work in both years. But, you know, if you tried to wait till the very fall to try and cram it all in, well, then your prices go up and it's harder to get people. So as long as it's bid in a timely fashion, it typically provides better pricing because more people are interested, so.
Okay.
So I guess we're going to get more bids, right?
I'd like to just go ahead with it and do the whole thing like we had planned. It's not going to get any cheaper.
And do you want that to be a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
This is, you're making the motion on item eight?
Yes.
Is there any way possible to put it off till November 7th just to have the discussion on the costing? So we can appease both sides? I mean, if it's not substantial, then I agree we go forward with it. You know, do the whole project because cost is going to go up 10, 12, 15% yearly. It's just the way it is. So what are we currently into this, number eight?
Should we mail 3 million?
And actually, Jan made the motion, so we would need to follow through with that first.
Well, there's not really a mo, well, I think this is just discussion time, so I guess you start voting no on these other resolutions.
So...
If we get to them if here's...
Yeah, we're on number eight, so the resolution...
Unless somebody wants to make a motion to table it. I don't, I guess I don't know how to...
I mean, number eight is a resolution authorizing to sign the engagement agreement.
And that, if we're assuming that we're going forward with some portion of the project, we could still go ahead and approve that part, but their price is going to change if our project changes, so.
So we're saying...
I just don't know if we do any of seven through 12 if we're getting new prices.
And Jan, you're thinking most of the goal with this is...
I say just take a straw vote here and see if you want to proceed or just wait. Each of you say wait or...
Jan, yours would be to go now with the whole project?
No.
Any thoughts?
I think we should wait. I'd like to see it done, but at the same point in time, the cost is substantial. And I think if we didn't look into at least the bare minimum of finding out what it would take to run it up to Second Avenue Southwest, or, I'm sorry, Second Avenue West, I'm afraid that we didn't, we didn't do our due diligence at that point.
I agree that we need to look at, you know, push this back to November 7th and then let the chips fall in. Yeah, wait.
So I'd say we, somebody make a motion to table number seven through 12.
Eight through 12.
Second?
I'm sorry, eight through 12.
Table.
Buska made the motion and Creener seconded? Okay. Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Creener?
Yes.
Carmen?
No.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number 13, motion to award contract to... So I guess before we go there then, so, just so we're all on the same page then, basically, we want the project, we want the water to go away, right? That's the main goal. And then at, you know, roughly from Second Avenue West?
And we want the sinkhole.
And the sinkhole? So basically, it's not, yeah?
Yep, so we'll have new estimate by the next meeting prior to the public hearing further downtown.
What do you, what do you think that'll cost from you guys to redo that estimate?
It'll just be part of what we're already under contract to do, so.
Okay.
If we were to get it sooner, we could have a meeting sooner than that if...
Yeah, yeah, but if we can, yeah, we can talk and...
I'm just afraid if I wait till November 7th, then I don't have enough time to get it, public hearing for November 21st, you know, so then all of a sudden, we're into December, so. Not that I'm trying to push you, but...
We'll, we'll make up a separate project schedule because they were basically identical, but we'll have a separate project scheduled to kind of go with that project, the Seventh Street one.
So even a whole month of be doable?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll schedule something up, Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll schedule something up and then we'll bring that back and we'll talk about what dates work for, for the council and everyone, so.
Can you just go in the car and do it now or no?
Well, I got a calculator.
Okay. All right. Just so we're all on the same page then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just as a comment, personally, that would be useful because I happen to have missed the next meeting.
Okay.
The thing is, if there's not that much of a difference.
I, I, and I agree if there's not.
The only thing I want is on there, when you're, when you're talking about this and getting figures, I wanna know what happens if we don't do the rest of it and how much will it cost? Because that's the only thing I'm afraid of right now is all of a sudden, the next time when we have to do this, then we're talking another million and a half. It's like we're gonna look really stupid if we didn't do it.
Because ultimately, we could save, let's say, $500,000 by not doing it, but then if we had to do that exact spot next year, it's gonna cost more than 500,000 probably by quite a bit.
Yeah, right. And just, yes, there's some fixed costs that are always included that it just keeps, you know, and prices never go backwards.
No.
Have you ever seen them go down?
Not very often, no. Maybe one thing.
Okay. Now, just so we're not spinning our wheels, I guess, so. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Next is the motion to award contract to Dave's Home Improvement for $52,379 under the Owner Occupied Housing CDBG grant.
Who's Dave's Home Improvement?
Not me.
They're out of.
West Union, wasn't it?
West Union, yeah. I saw it. It's in the, it was in the packet, I think.
Okay, excuse me, but.
I saw it last name.
I'll just say, I assume it's out of West Union because we haven't been able to get anyone locally to do it.
Simmering Corey has worked with them on several housing projects in other towns, and we have gone out for bid four times, I believe, and this is the only one that has come through. They are out of West Union, Iowa. David Langrick.
There you go.
There. I'll make the motion.
One second.
Amy and Alex?
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Carman?
Yes.
And McConnell?
Yes.
Last and finally, on the west, discussed proposed Eagle Scout project on Kings Road. You're welcome to come up here if you'd like. Have you learned much tonight?
This is our city council meeting.
Okay.
To another one before, for one of these merit badges. So I came with my other son when his scout group was here to another meeting and I approached Gary Kriener. Ethan Casper, I'm Ann Casper. He is right now, he is at Star Rank, which will then go to Life Rank pretty soon. And then after Life Rank is working on your Eagle Scout. So we are wanting, we were thinking ahead, ahead of schedule and wanting to be prepared because that's that Boy Scout motto, to work on his Eagle Scout project. And we had thought of a lot of different things. And then it kind of had been approached to us by some other people, hey, did you know there was a Boy Scout camp out by Kings Road? Oh, really? You know, like, we're not from this area. We didn't know the history of the area. And someone had mentioned that it was owned by the city. We live not very far out by there and we drove by and, and you would drive by and you would absolutely miss it if you didn't know it was there because it's not kept, I believe. I believe some of the neighbors in that neighborhood, Kings Road neighborhood are the ones that have actually mowed. I know it, it hadn't been mowed almost all summer, but it is mowed right now. So they had been kind of doing the upkeep. There is the shelter out there with the fireplace. And so we're like, oh, well, wouldn't it be great to see this, you know, brought back to life? I'm sure the people that live out in that area would make use of it as well, just because it's so close to where the houses are. It's just a little bit down the road. And so we just wanted to find out more about it and, and about possibility of what the steps would be to utilize this as an Eagle Scout project.
Sure.
Have you given, I know we talked, have you given much thought about what's your plans? How far do you wanna go into this?
We had kind of talked about that, us with my husband, TJ Casper, who also works at the Fitness Center. I know he's talked to Brandon about with parks and, and kind of, you know, since it is technically a city park.
Right.
As kind of what ideas they had, you know, it could be that you rent out the space like you do for Castle Lodge, or people can make reservations, that type of stuff. But our thoughts are there's so much work out there to be done. It's possible that it could be multiple, there could be multiple Eagle Scouts utilizing this area to get it back up to where it could be used by the community.
Do you have a specific thing in mind right now?
Um, we were kind of looking just originally at like getting the shelter usable. I mean, obviously some signage out there would be good.
Level it out the ground?
Yes. When you drive out there, the ground definitely needs to be leveled. And just, we haven't really done a whole lot of exploring. I wanted to get kind of our ducks in the row, which is why I approached Gary at that meeting and say, is this even a possibility? Before we go through all of the work of, and obviously we would present kind of, you know, an idea proposal of what we had, what we had kind of thought of what to do out there. And maybe it is, like my husband said, something that would be better if you could have multiple Eagle Scouts helping to work. He's got a, a couple other scouts in his group that are about at the same rank. I know in the other group, there's a couple other as well that are fairly close behind his, behind his rank. That's the group my other son has in. So like I said, it was kind of fact finding. Is this even a possibility? What would our next steps be? Would, is this the right audience to approach or is it better to be talking to the park board about it?
Right.
And that kind of stuff.
Have you talked to the park board other than your husband and Brandon?
My husband had just kind of in passing talked to Brandon and he had thought that Brandon had talked at a board meeting, but I, I reviewed their minutes and it doesn't look like they'd actually brought it up. Maybe they've talked in passing.
I don't think the park board's ever had anything to do with it, so.
Without there?
This is a council decision.
Even though, because what is the history of it?
The street department used to mow it way, way back.
Why we own a piece of land up?
Because, yeah, is the fireplace from an old building or was that?
It's, it's part of the shelter.
Yeah.
That's out there. Yeah, it's a stone, like an outdoor fireplace.
Right. It's, yeah, I don't know, Gary, maybe.
I actually remember back in the 70s that it was used. It was, you know, daycare, night camps and stuff like that, when there's more involvement with more scouts and stuff around.
Steamboat Rock, is that?
It is, it is before Steamboat Rock, yes.
Okay.
They've said maybe like the Kiwanis had had it at one time and then they were the ones that, that gave it to the city. I don't know. Like I said, we're not from around here. We don't know the history. I've tried doing some, a little bit of research. I haven't found that out, but I mean, ideally, the scouts would utilize that. We utilize the different parks in town to have our meetings and the nature center parks. And so we, this would be just another venue that we could utilize. It's right next to all the public grounds.
Right.
So great for hiking and just, you know, getting out in the outdoors with the other scouts.
There's access to it. You wouldn't be going across nobody's yard, though, right?
No, there's a driveway that you drive right into it.
It's right by the road. It's hard to see. Once you know it's there, you can find it, but yeah.
Yep, yep. There is a section, maybe, you know, just the width of a car that is mowed that you can drive in there. Once the winter comes and things die, you can see the shelter from the road, but once there's growth, you can barely see it.
When I talked to Dean Reichs, he said he can't remember mowing out there since probably the 90s, mid 90s, so.
And so, yeah, the ground is, is very unlevel if you go out there and if you go.
Really?
Very rough.
So there's a shelter there?
There is a shelter.
And no picnic tables or anything probably then? Oh, is there?
Yeah. They're pretty rough.
They're empty.
Yep. And I don't know if it's a possibility to talk about whether it's, you know, a place where scouts could utilize it to do campouts. I mean, we, we've, we just did a campout at the Borlaug Farm. They like, they like to have us come out there. They let us camp out there for free. That's one of the things we like to do campouts, but, you know, with limited funds, going to a campground in the area, they either charge you or we've talked to, so like for example, Kendallville or over by Lick Mill, we've traded camping for service project at, at those locations in the past, too. So like I said, it'd be great to be able to utilize it for campouts as well as meetings. And also, like I said, as part of the community, too. It's a very, it's a very neat location out there, you know? You wouldn't think you're in this area because it's so wooded and it's down by the river and in the valleys and very close to Steamboat Rock. I believe Stephen Burke had said there's a, there's a trail that goes from their campground up to the back end of the property as well. But it was, Stephen Burke had talked to us, Amenaki, Steve Amenaki, and then Amanda Stockdale had approached us. And we're like, actually, we've been thinking about that as an Eagle Scout project idea, so.
Okay.
So that's kind of the background of it. Just wanting to know what would be the next steps and what we would even be able to do out there.
Right.
But our original plan was kind of, you know, helping breathe life back into the shelter at least.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I think it's certainly a doable idea. I guess the, the council can chime in. You don't think the parks would have anything to do with it, Michelle?
You'll have to decide which department is going to maintain it if you do have them undertake it because once they do this, they'll have to maintain.
I don't believe it's been discussed at one of the board meetings because it's not on the minutes.
I don't know if they have, they don't have trailers or anything to haul moors out there, so, you know, you're gonna have to decide which department's in charge of maintaining.
I mean, I guess I have a more basic question. Why do we own a chunk of land way outside the city limits?
Good question.
Why don't we just give it to the, all of the, I looked on the assessor's map, all of the adjoining land is state land. Why don't we just give it to the state? I think you could still do the project. I don't think it would, I mean, I would hope it would interfere because it sounds like a great project, but.
Yeah, I mean, we were surprised when someone said the city owns it because it would make more sense that the county would own it.
Right.
And I approached Gary and he's like, we do? And I think Michelle was like, yeah, I think we do. And I'm like, I went on the treasurer's website and yep, it says City of Cresco, so.
I think it was dated to us because it's two separate plots. It comes under, it's not listed as one. It's listed as two separate plots out there owned by the City of Cresco, so.
I'm sure it's trackable, but either or.
I think we just do, you know, just look in the legalities of it, you know? We have to have discussion. What's your timeframe?
Um, we wouldn't be thinking like until next summer or maybe even the summer after that.
So you could possibly be talking about 24 yet?
Yes.
Because you're, I mean, you gotta put a plan together. You gotta cover materials and obviously get some donations and.
Yep. And his timeframe for earning his eagle, he has to do it before he turns 18. And he would still meet that requirement if we did it in 2024.
And then we could track it.
Yeah, give us some time to.
Hold the cordons.
Obviously, we've got a couple other issues ahead of you right now we're working on, so.
It's kind of a neat little area out there, yeah, yeah.
It is very neat. Yep, it is very neat.
And I bet if it was, I bet if it was fixed up, it would get used.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, Amanda Stockdale is one of the people that live out in that neighborhood and she had said that, yeah, I think people out here would use it. She, I think, mentioned one of the doctors lives out there.
Dr. Jensen?
I believe she said Dr. Jensen was actually the one that had mowed it this summer, so.
And as an aside, we can gift real property to other government agencies, but that is it. So we could not gift it to the Boy Scouts or something like that, but we could.
The county store, right?
We could gift to Howard County or to the state of Iowa. So just, so you understand that. I also did reach out to Kelly O'Donnell regarding insurance and liability insurance. And he said, this happens quite often where cities own property that they're not even aware of. And so the EMC has a blanket insurance coverage for all property that we own. So if it came up that somebody did get hurt out there. But he said, if we do proceed with doing an Eagle Scout project, we're gonna have to list it as property and get it special insurance if there's people actually working out there on it. So we'll have to do some work on insurance as well.
Maybe we talk with Jeff Corzino. Maybe that might be the type of thing where they might be, the county might be interested in it and, you know.
I don't know if they have property near that either, but maybe the state, I don't know.
Yeah, the, the rest of it is all the public land.
State.
Owned by the state, yeah. And then private landowners on the other side of the road.
Yeah. We could probably start with, with Jeff and Craig out there. And if they wouldn't want it, they probably know who to call at the state if the state wants it or not, or if we determine we wanna keep it, too, I guess, but.
If you want, I mean, I could approach them and just, you know, start to get some dialogue and see if there's interest and, you know, we could give you an answer here a couple months down the road and say, yea, your name.
I think the key is that somebody.
We've got to manage it.
Will take care of it afterwards.
Yeah.
So I'd hate to have you do all that work and then a year later, it's all grown over.
And that's why I said I, I didn't know whether this was the audience or is the park board the audience.
I don't know if the state goes around and mows stuff like that. I bet they don't.
About the only thing that I've seen out in the Kings Road area on the public is they mow the little, you know.
Drive way access?
Parking areas and there's some, just down by Steam, by the Steamboat Rock, there is a mowed path.
There is, okay.
Down that way as well, so.
They do do something.
Okay.
But at least the state would have trailers, I imagine. I mean, not the state, the county would have trailers to haul their mowers around.
Yeah. Okay. All right. I think we're going in the right direction, so.
Do you think I do need to attend a park board meeting and, and talk with them as well, too? We definitely can.
I, I was at the meeting when they did bring it up.
Okay, they did?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did. Brandon did bring it up.
Was there much discussion or just?
Not a lot. I think it was just information.
Okay. Okay.
Give us some time.
Yeah.
You're an honor.
Yeah, but great idea. Thank you for bringing it.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening. And that was the last item. If somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Jan and?
Gary. Gary? Sorry. Fortune?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yeah.
Carman?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
And Buska?
Yes.